All right, we're gonna get started. I call this meeting of Winthrop School Board to order.
Recording in progress.
Please join me for the pledge.
I am the superintendent of the United States of America and to your republic, the United States, our nation, our people, the living and the dead.
We'll start with our roll call. We do have two board members not physically present today. One is out sick and one resuming in.
She's in.
Okay, perfect. Hi Monica. And our student representatives are, will be arriving late today there at a tennis match. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Oh, welcome. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Board meeting of April 24th, 2024 as written.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor? Moving on to the report, starting with the superintendent report.
Uh, I didn't, we, we just met last week, so I didn't submit a report. Uh, we do have a financial report that was included in your packet. There is public comments.
Oh, I apologize. I skipped right over that. Thank you, Tim, for catching that. Are there any public comments at this time? Either on Zoom or in the audience? Seeing none, we'll revert back to the superintendent report.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I didn't submit a additional report. We do have the financials. I'm happy to answer your questions about that. I'll just say that our plate continues to be a concern overall. It looks like we should have enough money left in the other accounts to cover that. We'll be able to finish the, uh, the year in the, in the black. It's been a bit of a challenge. This report may look a little different because I ran this one. And it's been a bit of a challenge. Denise will be back soon and hopefully we can get all things taken care of. The only other thing I want to just mention, and I will provide it to you at the next meeting, is the, when I was working with, um, somebody to, uh, do the, do, and when it was called the warrant for the town council to vote on the budget on June, whatever it is, I discovered that I've heard about a new ED 279. We tried the most updated numbers and we, um, are getting an additional $109,000 from the state. So, um, it doesn't require anything different from the board because you vote on the expenditure side, which is the top 14 articles. And so what it did do is it took the bottom line impact on the taxpayers to 4.98%, so just under 5%. And it really did just take another 5%. I didn't, we didn't manipulate it any other way. So it looks a little funny. So other than that, I, I just have one resignation, Trevor Campbell. And typically I don't say much when we do resignations. I just want to say, um, I wish Trevor the best. She's actually, um, going to Canada to be with her husband. And so, uh, she, she's a young lady who I think has made tremendous progress. I think has, has really flourished under Lori's leadership and, um, and certainly with Megan's help because she's a math teacher. But she's really, really done well and we're really gonna miss her.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the school board chair report.
Does anybody have any questions on the financial report?
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay. Moving on to the chair report. I don't have much report today, but I do want to say, um, we discussed, and I had actually talked to our student representatives about honorary voting. And I had planned to put that on the agenda to discuss it as a board, but it's really just a chair decision. And so I wanted to let everyone know that you guys would be voting in an honorary position alongside of us and that would be tracked and kept in, um, our minutes. Okay? Awesome. Thank you. And that will be it for my chair report because we did just meet. Moving on to our committee reports, starting with finance.
Uh, yes, we met. We did, uh, payrolls 20, 21, 22, and 22, 1. Warrants 19A, 19B, 20A, and 21A.
Thank you, Tim. Policy?
We are going to be discussing and doing a second read on two policies later on in the meeting.
Thank you. Negotiations?
I'll take that one. Kelly and I were both at the last meeting. Uh, we're getting close. We have an update after an executive session tonight, which I am quite sure we'll get to finally, uh, bring you all up to speed on where things stand with, with negotiations. But we're, we continue to, um, plug away. Joey Letourneau and Stacy Born and I have been working on this, on one of the appendixes for stipends. And we just want, I'm trying to go through every single stipend that we have in the, in the district and created, we created a formula. They all need to be formularized, I guess. That's a, that's a real word, but, um, they need to all be given a factor, a percentage that we can use to, so that we don't have to negotiate stipends every single time we negotiate. That'll be a really nice thing.
Thank you. Moving on to our administrative reports, which we have them. And starting with our old business, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following policies for second reading.
Some moved.
Seconded. A discussion?
Can you, can you read those just for public purposes?
Go ahead, Catherine.
Oh, no, no, no problem. Oh, yeah. Um, the two policies that we're reading tonight are policy BEDH, and that is public participation at school board meetings. And then the next one we'll be doing after that is policy BHC, which is school board relationships and communications with staff. So this is the second read. We hope that we hear any feedback. I perhaps want to go over what this looks like to just review how we do policies and present them. So policies are often built on former information or something coming from main school management that ensures that we are following all legal requirements for our policies. So things that we add are the things that are double-lined, double-underlined. And then things that we work in an old policy that we are taking out have a strike-through. And then things that are just regular text, that is information that was there in the previous, um, iteration of the policy. The things that have, that are highlighted and struck through are things that were on for the first read, but somehow have been adapted in the second read, but that they've been taken off or something like that. So, um, we had a little bit of editing between the first read and the second read. That's the yellow in the first paragraph. We're pretty excited about this policy as providing some clarity. You will see, um, page two of three, that's the red nine. Uh, 1, 2, 3, that whole page is all new text, which we hope will provide people with some clarity in the organization and running of boards and for how the public, which we very much like, can best, um, participate in our school board meetings.
Thank you, Catherine. Those in favor? Any other comments? Thank you, I'm jumping ahead.
Just one question. I have, I have read this a couple times. I just want to make sure I didn't miss something. I know there's been confusion of if someone from the public speaks, do we speak back? I didn't quite see that that was cut and dry in here. I hope it's something we should add of if, do we speak? Do we speak or do we not? Or do we, is it a choice? I'm not sure.
I think in our discussion, and Alicia and Jim, please weigh in on this. I think that idea is that particular piece, which traditionally and in most schools, there is a certain, uh, almost barrier to respond, that, that's the framework they work with. I think the, um, policy, and it seems like Winthrop as a board, has historically allowed for some latitude in that particular piece. So I think we were silent on that to allow for that piece, if I remember the conversation. So are you feeling that it should be included or should it be?
I just think that these are the issues that we're having major conflict here and that we need a very black and white. Are we going to talk or are we not gonna talk? Because it's just, there's too much sway in this. That's just my opinion. Yeah, or, or it should stay in here. Are we, are we gonna, are we gonna respond or not respond? Or do we respond to the chair or, um, ask questions to the chair? I have something I don't know that should be in here, so we're not having a, I can just see where we're gonna have that debate here in that meeting. Where we're gonna have too much conversation happening with the public and it's, there's no, um, I don't know.
Thank you, Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Maybe that's something we should put on for discussion. I actually personally think I would like the clarity and us not to respond in that moment. I think what we're working against is this idea of barriers to communication and we don't want to communicate that. I think if we somehow are able to be more clear about the structure and the idea that it's a public meeting and we want to make sure that everybody knows what's on the agenda so that people can come and talk about it, so we don't talk about things that are a surprise to anyone. That's the reason we don't respond. That's the reason we don't want to have conversations when people bring things up. So, um, I am comfortable, more comfortable, having a clear statement that we don't respond. I'm not comfortable with that. I think that might help, but we would want to make sure to do the publicity work to ensure the reason for that and, um, I don't know if there's a name there. I think another piece of the Winthrop cultural, um, school, on the board meetings though, are when we do have discussions, again, unlike other boards, we have had interaction. So I mean, I think there's tension with our identity. I think we're having a bit of a crisis of identity.
Well, I get that's always my point. I just like, it's like, we're gonna do this policy, we should either go that way or that way. We need to kind of, which, which way are we going?
So, um, just one second. And I kind of, so I, I see what you're saying. When we had this meeting with the policy committee, I had suggested that it be narrowed down to public participation during the public comment section specifically because I kind of felt that you could put that in and that would apply to this. But whereas public participation broader, um, and we do have those conversations, that's where, and I, I don't know if you remember me saying that?
I did, I did.
And that's, that was where I was coming from. So I don't know, maybe I didn't, um, push that hard enough, but I, I see what you're saying. It's just that I, having, um, that in mind, that would do how, that would do, as a board, have a discussion and then invite it to, you know, invite our public to then discuss after we've had our discussion. So I, you know, it might be a good idea to put it on the agenda so we can have a, a discussion, but go ahead, Jim.
I actually think it's in there, the very first paragraph. The primary purpose of school board meetings is to conduct the business of the board related to school policies, programs, and operations. The school board is charged with attending to the published agenda and not engaging in conversations that are not on the agenda that was provided to the community in advance. And this has been a, a point of contention all the four years that I've been here, um, where we, and, and I've been a part, I've been in 11 different school systems, five as a superintendent, and there are some school systems that don't allow any public participation except for the public comment period. I feel, um, all the places where I've been as a superintendent, we are welcoming that the process has been as we've done it. It's been a good practice here in Winthrop is that the conversation on a motion or a discussion is with the board first. And once the board has shared their things, then we, we welcome, uh, people to, uh, be a part of that conversation. And other places, there are, there are asterisks on, on the board agenda that says when the public can participate in discussions and when they can't. I find that very limiting. It's one of the things that's been frustrating about all of this, you know, we still, we still Zoom. We have people on Zoom. Most people are not Zooming anymore. Uh, we, you know, we, we have our recordings back as far as you want to go. So I think we've been pretty open about that. We, we want people to participate, um, and somehow having a really hard time getting that message out, uh, to people. But I, I think it's there. I think the, and the law, I always come back to what the, what the law says. The law says you have to have a public comment period. Uh, this came from, uh, sort of a spinoff from Drumwoodson, not exactly, but it was from the meeting that we attended, but this was not one of the ones they specifically addressed in there. The next one is, but, um, you know, I think it says it and I, I think it's always been a practice of school boards and school committees. And I think we actually do a pretty good job with it.
So, so I agree that's, that's written there, but I just want to make sure that we, so when public comes up and talks, we are not speaking back. Correct? According to the policy?
No, if it's during the public comment, I'm sorry.
Jim?
Thank you. Uh, if it's, if it's on the item that's on the agenda, which is, that's all this big thing about public right to know. Right, public right to know is that they need to see it on the agenda and know that it's going to be discussed. I don't think there's any issue with, um, having a dialogue with, amongst yourself as a board, with the community, with whoever wants to be a part of it, as long as it's on the agenda and the public knows it's going to be discussed. Public comment and the, the not talking back, not talking back, it's not the right word. Not giving feedback during public comments is more about, um, not engaging in a conversation that the rest of the public doesn't have any idea that you're having.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just want to make sure we're very, because I, that's, we're having problems. I just want to make it very clear. Public comment, we are not talking back.
Correct. Catherine?
I think both Alicia and Tim brought up really important points and I think, um, we use these policies and people look up to the title to find out what to do and we want them to use them as guidance. So therefore I think it's very important that it would say public participation during public comment at school board meetings. Just again, for that clarity. That is what we're talking about here. And then, um, I do think, if we can reiterate what, um, I miss is that gray area. So, um, the second sentence, it says, "The school board is charged with attending to the published agenda and not engaging in conversations that are not on the agenda that was provided to the community in advance." So, I think, I'm gonna show my personal opinion, that like Tim, if there's something on the agenda, I don't think we should respond to something that the public brings up to the podium during public comment time. The time for us to respond to that would be when we're talking about it as a board. So I would second adding that we're not going to respond to public comments because if it is something in the item of the agenda, which casually we're saying you could respond to, I don't think that's the right time to respond to it. Because if we're gonna discuss it, because it's on the agenda, we should hold our comments to that discussion time because then we get off track with, with our agenda.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other comments?
So are you suggesting an edit?
Yes, I suppose I'm suggesting an edit unless, Tim, would you like to take the edit? So, um...
I think you just said it, didn't you? You said it, but I don't know what to say.
Well, "The school board is charged with attending to the published agenda and not engaging in conversations." So it would just be, it doesn't have any, it's separate from the agenda. "The school board is charged with not engaging in conversations." That sounds kind of harsh.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to.
Right. So.
Jim?
I wouldn't want to say that. I think that gives a wrong message. We're trying to change that perception and get people to understand what we're trying to accomplish here, not, not further that, um, divide. And I think it's, everywhere else I've been, it's, it's pretty clearly understood and I guess for me, I think it's purely, pretty clearly stated here. I thought you were suggesting something to the title that I, that I couldn't agree to.
No.
The law says that there needs to be a public comment period, um, at, uh, the board meetings. And Drumwoodson made it really clear to us as part of, it's, it's kind of in both policies that you, you, the board should not engage in a conversation that is not on the board's published agenda for business. This is a business meeting for the board and we are public, we, we publish our agenda and the community expects us to do the work that has been on the published agenda. Public comment's an opportunity for people to come up and share some, um, share whatever, that things that are not on the agenda that they either want on a future agenda or that they, um, just want to share with the board, um, that we're not going to engage in a conversation about because it's not, it's not, um, on the agenda for the public to know. It's not on the board's working agenda.
Catherine? Sorry. Yes, I want to change the title. But Jim, I think there's still this, um, it could be the clarity that public comment, if they're going to say something that's on the agenda, they can wait and say it on the agenda. Like, we're still at the spot that if somebody comes up to say something and it's on the agenda, that still is that public comment is not the time to respond.
Thank you, Catherine. Jim?
I agree with you. I actually, as I think about what has been an issue, that doesn't feel like it's been an issue. I think when someone comes to the, to the podium and they start to talk about something that's on the agenda, I've said, or Alicia has said, Kelly said in the past, that that's on the agenda, we'll be talking about that later. And people have been willing to, I haven't said anyway, "No, I want to say my piece right." That hasn't been, it hasn't been that contentious in my mind. I think that's, I agree with you that that's right, but I, I don't think it's been a problem.
Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you very much. As far as, A, do we want to add this?
So, is this where we make a friendly motion to change the title? And because we're going to, we want to bring it back to vote, can we make a friendly agreement to change the title?
I think that's reasonable.
So can, um, what do you guys think about public participation during public comment at school board meetings? And David and Joseph, remember, you're gonna be voting on this, so, uh, weigh in.
So I think it does make sense because even, um, you know, the first one says, "The board includes a public comment period." Number two, "The board will hear public comments." So it just makes sense to me and I think Tim's in agreement and... Yes, Monica, do you have any say?
Catherine, could you read the proposed change again? Thank you.
No problem. Public participation during public comment at school board meetings.
Just from our words, do they stand, it sounds a little redundant. I'm not sure why we need, um, I'm not sure why it's, why it's been worded that way. I mean, I guess, yeah, it sounds more confusing than not to me, but, I, I mean, I have no real objections, just sounds forgivably a little clunky, that's all, not a, for it.
So Catherine, when we've, um, with the title, could we simplify it to say, public participation at, or public, uh, ideas?
Yes, I would agree. It's clunky and, um, I think also very clear.
Jim?
I heard that on the side of your eyes there. What if you said, "Public participation at school board meetings," and end in parentheses, "public comment period"?
Okay, Monica? Shaking your head? Okay.
Oh, um, I had a non-verbal communication of, no. But I do not, I think it would be just better, I think the parentheses are helpful. And we want to make it clear that this is public participation during public comment at school board meetings.
Got it. How are you feeling?
How are you feeling with that edit, board?
Okay. Sounds good.
We need to talk about the second policy too, unless you're gonna vote on separately, which we do, we should have.
Well, it's kind of, yeah, it's just kind of strong.
Oh, no, I don't meant that. I, I meant this, yeah.
Okay. Yep. Okay, let's talk about the next policy.
All right. So this next policy again is adapted from a former policy. It was last revised in 6122. And, um, it is largely the same. It clarifies school board relationships and communications with staff. And then it articulates the different groups, the school board and the superintendent, the school board and the principal, the school board and teachers and other school employees, and the school board with communications with staff. So that last topic, we had some additions to that. You can see with the double underlining and the, um, I thought we made some changes to this. And the, um, yellow, oh, I thought, the yellow, we made some changes from the last read and we're trying to clarify that we have some parents on the boards, board members who are also parents and ensuring that they understand and feel comfortable with their communication avenues.
Thank you. And we also did add that legal reference. Did you say that?
I did not.
And we added, um, BCA, the Code of Ethics, as well as a legal reference. All right, so any discussion on this policy? Okay. We'll go ahead and take a vote, uh, for BEDH and BHC. All in favor? Thank you. Moving on to new business, which is to approve the district Title IX and affirmative action officer job description. This is in the back of our packet.
Some moved.
Seconded. Discussion? We'll have Jim talk about this when he comes back.
I do, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
In case, I'm, actually, I think all of us know this. I believe we've been informed about the new laws that were just passed that are going to be enacted for 2024 and coming forth. I'm sure Jim's gonna talk to us about it. But there's significant legal changes in Title IX and implications in our school functioning and our methods. I don't know if you heard about it, but it's coming down from the state, so I think that's the same.
Thank you, Catherine.
Could we pause on that and move on maybe?
Great, I do.
Okay.
Oh, here he is. We are talking about, um, the new business to approve the district Title IX and affirmative action officer job descriptions. We were hoping you would speak on that.
Did you vote on the other?
Yes. I, I did write it down, so I have that information for you for the minutes.
Do you have a motion in a second on this?
We do. We're just waiting for the...
Is it, is it Tim and Catherine?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. I apologize. I think enough said. So, we, the board had... So we, the board had added a up to halftime FTE, affirmative action officer as part of the budget. And so the next step for us is to put together a job description. We reached out, we, in full disclosure, Colleen reached out to a couple of different places that had a job description. And primarily, this is pretty much from Bangor. Bangor is the only place in the state that has a full-time affirmative action Title IX coordinator. And so we kind of looked through what they had and struck a few things that didn't relate to us here in Winthrop and came up with this job description. So if this, if you approve this tonight, then, well, I actually think we may have already in-house posted, anticipated. But we can't move forward with this position until we have the job description approved.
Any discussion from the board? David?
I just want to clarify on the physical qualifications part. Is the same thing written for one and two? Because on mine, it looks like it's written twice.
Could you give me the numbers on that?
Physical qualifications, number one and number two.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
There's just all of it.
That's why a lot of eyes looking at it are good.
That's all I saw, and I looked at the other ones too.
Thank you.
Which one do you want to eliminate, one or two?
One.
That's good.
Catherine?
I remember there was some discussion, so you said this is a halftime position?
Up to halftime.
Up to halftime, okay. Are we coordinating with any of the neighboring schools? Or is that something that, I think I heard something about...
Yeah, we explored that option. There were no takers on that. And who knows what it might morph into in the future? Because I think, I agree with kind of the experience that we've had as a system, that this will become a necessary position. And as people are trying to deal with it in the way that they're dealing with it right now, I think they're going to be, no, I don't know. It's been a very difficult year for us. Two years ago was a very difficult year for a neighboring district. But they've had, you know, very few issues over the last, last two years. So you never know. I don't, I just, this is one of these ones that I'm quite sure, based upon our experiences and talking to people, that, you know, this is going to be a very necessary position, probably indefinitely. So we don't presently have any plans to share this position.
Thank you, Jim. When you alluded to the other district having a better year, is that because they hired? No, no, okay, thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Any other questions? Catherine?
I'm wondering, so this, if this is, when you say up to, is it like on a consultant basis? How, what is up to halftime?
I don't know that I can, I think we have to put it out there and that's where we put it out and we'll see who applies ideally. We may have somebody, I think we've tried to do it. We've had three very qualified people attempt to do this job this year, but it's just so overwhelming that we realized it can't be done by a seconded position. So we may have some positions that we can maybe split and have it be halftime something and halftime something else, a halftime this and halftime something else. So, but, you know, we, I'd like to put it out there and see what comes in and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. Any other board questions or comments? Anything from Monica? Okay. All those in favor of the job description? Four zero with our student representatives, two zero. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our second public comments section. Does anyone from the audience or on Zoom have any comments? Seeing none, we'll move into our school board comments. Catherine?
I think I'm going with the suggestion, suggested additions to future agendas as school board members. So what I think I would like to suggest is that perhaps on future agendas, we can have a discussion of the role of our student school board members and find, communicate with them, kind of coming from our school board members, ways in which they could help and strengthen and improve communication and take on an active role. And so I was wondering if we could put that on a future agenda to discuss what we, what that could look like.
Do you give them the public comments or...
The addition.
The additions to future agendas by school board. Thank you, Catherine, for bringing that up.
Great minds think alike.
Any other school board additions? Oh, Monica?
I think we really need to add to the agenda a discussion concerning administration's use of the media.
Thank you, Monica. Any others? Tim?
It's not critical, but at some point, there's such a lot of discussion about those Ramones days and we haven't talked about it yet here, so we really should kind of put that on the agenda at some point and talk about that.
Thank you, Tim. We do have plans for a survey to address that as well coming out in the works. Just to let you know, but thank you very much for that suggestion. Any others? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on now to the school board comments. If there are any, let me know. David?
Sure, I'll start. So Joseph and I really, because we had our tennis match, which we won, we beat Kony. Joseph won his and I won mine, so we're pretty happy with that. I got to go to the grade school a few times. I went there this week and I've been there a week prior. The book fair seems to be a big hit up there. And it looked like a lot of fun. I got to go in and check it out. I haven't been in one in a long time. That's all I have to say. I don't know if Joseph has anything to add, but I don't know how baseball did today, but I know they had a game, so did softball. That's all for me.
Thank you, David. Nothing from Joseph today. Any other comments? Tim?
Yeah, just because I have a kind of connection to the male school track team. The girls won an 18 meet yesterday and the boys came really close, they got second.
Thank you very much. Yes, David?
And to add to that, that meet yesterday was run by that high school track team from Winthrop. And we did an amazing job making it efficient. Apparently, we were almost done a half hour before suggested. Or I guess 15 is what it turned into, 15 minutes. But all of the people did very well and making sure that meet did not drag on as not everyone likes to stay for how long a track meet is.
Thank you very much. I don't have any comments. And I think we're okay online here. Okay, perfect. We're going to enter into executive session, but before that, we need a vote. So I entertain a motion to move into executive session regarding labor negotiations pursuant to 1 MRSA 4056D.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor? Perfect.